Good evening. Welcome to the August 23, 2012 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. At this time, Ms. Waller, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands under God and the biblical principle of righteousness.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Mrs. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood.
Present.
Mrs. Beck.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Eubanks.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Waller.
Present.
Ms. Ahmed.
Present.
Ms. Higgins.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, prior to adopting the agenda, please note the following changes. Item 8.6, Forestville Military Academy Running Track Replacement. The FY-12 additional work has been deleted from the budget consent agenda. Item 10.1, the Capital Improvement Program for Funding Years 2014 to 2019, has been deleted from the government's unfinished business, which we consider as a second reader. May I please have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Thank you, Ms. Boston.
Remember, the email that I sent was regarding, I think it's 8.06?
And you can pull it. That's, you can naturally do that.
Okay, fine. You want to wait until we get there?
Yes, ma'am.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, so it's been properly moved in second that we adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, the motion passed. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the June 28, 2012 Board Meeting Minutes? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved in second that we approve the June 28, 2000 minutes with the addition of a phone ringing. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor? Any objections, abstentions? Motion pass. At this time, we will have news break. The news break is entitled, "Welcome Back: First Day of School."
Of all the sights on the first day of school in Prince George's County, perhaps none was as symbolic of a new academic beginning than the cutting of the ribbon at the brand-new Green Belt Middle School. As parents and students eagerly streamed into the new two-story, $54 million cathedral of learning that is green in both color and environmental design, they could only marvel at and be a bit confused at what they found.
You're coming from Magnolia. You're here at Green Belt Middle. What are your feelings on this first day of school?
I'm scared I'll get lost in the hallways.
How's it feel to be coming to a brand-new school?
I'm really excited and I'm ready to learn new things and just enjoy the school year.
Good morning. Good morning. Morning, sir. How are you today? I love the green.
As Green Belt's principal and his staff greeted over 1,000 sixth-, seventh-, and eighth graders, there was pride all around at the school's recent accomplishments and excitement at having new learning tools to do even better, especially since Green Belt and all middle schools now have an extra 40 minutes of instructional time.
Trying to ensure that we make AMO again. We did make AMO for the first time, which was formerly AYP for the first time, and we're very excited about that.
What is it about this new building, from a teacher's perspective, that is really attractive to you?
Twenty-first century learning. We're able to do a whole lot more than we did in an old building. We had no whiteboards. Just the condition of the building sent a certain message. And now with this bright new building, the kids are very excited, the teachers are very excited to teach because we now have everything that we need.
For at least one Green Belt student, even though it was just the first day of school, he was already looking far ahead, giving voice to the school system's goal of being college and career-ready.
You seem like you're really excited to be here today.
Yes, I am.
Why so?
Because I want to go to university and I want to get a good job. I know. I want to be a businessperson when I grow up. Yeah.
So this is like one of the first steps. You've got your whole life planned.
Yeah.
The first day of school started, as it always does, with buses rumbling to life in the predawn darkness and then swinging open their doors to deliver youngsters loaded down with school supplies and descending the steps with various amounts of caution, class, and bravado. For those of Prince George's' 125,000 students walking to school with their parents, parting at the school door was often sweet sorrow.
We are looking forward to introducing parents and the community to Dr. Alvin Crowley. We think that he will bring a sense of enhancement to what we're doing and also bring his expertise in education for more than 30-plus years. So we're looking forward to moving forward.
For many parents, trust in their Prince George's Schools is total and complete, even if their children are occasionally a bit less excited than they are.
There, you a little scared?
No.
Oh, I like to hear that. You looking forward to lunch?
No.
What are you looking forward to?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I was able to come and do a school tour. As soon as we moved here, Dr. Singer was amazing. She took a lot of time with me and eased my nerves.
And while the first day was often a day of slow adjustment to academic routine, for some students, it was a time for immediate rigor. At Cora Rice Elementary, a school that saw a huge 22% gain in their science MSA scores last year, teacher Clark Baker challenged his seventh graders with a science and engineering puzzle that asked that they balance 11 nails atop just one. And over at Heather Hills Elementary, now a dedicated tag school for second through fifth graders, there was also no rest for the weary as students went striding back to academic fitness along the school's signature walking path, five loops of which make a mile. And if the students at Heather Hills loped at their own pace, 20 select juniors at Charles Flowers High School marched in disciplined formation on the first day, from their school to the firehouse across the street. Members of a new two-year fire safety course that will earn them 17 college credits and train them to be full-fledged firefighters, the stone-faced recruits were inducted into the program with tributes to their courage and strong words from their instructors.
Do you want this?
Yes, sir!
Do you really want it?
Yes, sir!
As those brave cadets rang the firehouse bell and thus committed to the fire fraternity, they might have been thinking back to the school bells of their kindergarten and elementary days that signaled teachers less strident perhaps and words of encouragement much softer, but emotions that were no less intense. Like Dexter Alahar and his parents discovered on the first day at Berwin Heights, striking out on your own as your future begins can be a time of much hope and more than a few tears. Try as you might not to shed them. Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zerrin Report.
Congratulations on the first day. So welcome back. Welcome to our first board meeting for the 2012-2013 school year. We opened our doors on Monday, the 20th of August, welcoming approximately 125,000 students. Board members, along with Dr. Height and other staff, visited schools across the county. And we are very delighted and excited about a new opportunity and chance to provide great educational options for students. I want to thank all of the departments that worked throughout the summer to prepare for the opening of schools. We clearly know that we have some glitches that we're still working through, but with the school district of our size, I want to say that, staff, we know that you've worked hard and we really appreciate your work. Want to welcome our new student board member, Ms. Shabnam Ahmed, a senior at Bowie High School, who will serve for the 2012-2013 school year. Well, are you a junior or senior? Chief senior. The Board of Education has selected Dr. Alvin Crowley to serve as interim superintendent for Prince George's County Public Schools for the 2012-2013 school year. Dr. Crowley, Deputy Chief of Programming Office of Special Education in the District of Columbia Public Schools, will join us on September 4, 2012. He will help to provide stability to our staff, students, and families as we search for our new superintendent of schools. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say that for the last six years, working with Dr. Height, he's still here. We have a couple more board meetings, but it has been a delight, Dr. Height, to work through the reform efforts. We have seen the fruit of our labor and we will continue to see that. But also, we want to wish you well as you continue to move forward and we appreciate your work. You're very welcome. The Board of Education held two county-wide forums about the superintendent search process. On August 16, it was at Central High School, and on August 21 at Bowie High School. The next moving-forward forum will be next week, August 30. It will be at Northwestern High School at 6:30 PM. Prince George's County Public Schools were looking for a leader who will enhance our record of achievement, who will provide every student with a world-class education, and strengthen our connection to the community. We anticipate officially launching our superintendent search in the fall of 2012, with the intention of completing it in the spring of 2013. The superintendent search process will be thorough, it will be transparent, and we will partner with all of our stakeholders. Prince George's County Public Schools was recently named a finalist for the 2012 CUBE Award, the Council of Urban Boards of Education. This is a big deal for us. CUBE represents more than 100 urban school districts in 35 states and the Virgin Island. It helps urban school leaders find solutions to challenges at the local level and seeks to improve their policymaking effectiveness. And so this year, we have been named a finalist. We will find out whether or not we are awarded ultimately in October. Prince George's County Public Schools is tied for first place for the 2011 and 2012 School System of the Year Award. This award is given out each year by the Maryland Center for Character Education. I want to congratulate our colleague, Ms. Boston, who was recently awarded an honorary doctorate degree from Lighthouse Christian College. Congratulations, Ms. Boston. Prince George's County Public Schools posted slight gains in mathematics while holding steady in reading in the 2012 MSAs, the Maryland School Assessments. The scores released in July by the Maryland State Department of Education show that increases focused on teacher training, academic interventions, and courses rigor, course rigor, and they are making a difference in student achievement. So we're pleased with our progress, but we know that we have a long way to go. We have much more work to do. And to that regard, we will continue to work with our teachers and administrators and the community in giving our students the best that we can in educational options. We have implemented several strategies to improve student achievement over the years, and they include better aligning the curriculum with the state standards, providing targeted professional development for teachers, addressing areas of low performance, holding focus groups with teachers to get input on instructional strategies, and conducting assessments with students to determine what their needs are. Kudos to students. Seven graduates of Eleanor Roosevelt's high school class of 2012 were winners in the 2012 National Achievement and National Merit Scholarship programs. More than 160,000 outstanding African-American high school seniors competed for national achievement scholarships, and 800 finalists will share awards that totaled over $2 million. Approximately 15,000 students nationwide met finalist requirements for National Merit Scholarship, and nearly 8,300 have been selected to receive scholarships that totaled over $35 million. Sebastian Anderson, Taryn Harris, Caitlin Moore, Randy Williams, Amber Yorkhouse-Clark will all receive $2,500 in national achievement scholarships from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. The following graduates receive college-sponsored national merit scholarships, which provided $500 to $2,000 annually for up to four years. Anna Flynn, University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and Patrick Healy, University of Maryland. Kudos to our teachers. Ms. Benita Curtis is a teacher at Fairmont Heights High School, has won the Johns Hopkins Center for a Livable Future grant. This is designed to teach students about the food, about the system, and its impact on the environment. Ms. Curtis is one of 10 teachers to receive the Teaching the Food Systems for Educators grant. This awards innovative educational activities for teachers who were early to adopt the Teaching the Food System curriculum. This program focuses on the relationship of food, public health, diet, and the environment. I want to take this opportunity to also recognize, Mr. Thomas may already know this, but in the legal world, every now and then, we get some recognized lawyers. And one of the notices that I got today was a congratulations to Abby Harrison. She was selected for inclusion in the 2012 Martin Del Hubble Addition for Preeminent Women Lawyers. This is an exclusive recognition for women lawyers who are determined to be both have legal, high possible rating in legal ability and ethical standards from their peers. Less than 5% of women lawyers have been recognized with this rating. This puts her among the elite women in the legal industry. Wanted to congratulate her for that recognition. A moment of silence, if you will, for the following. Thomas Waiters, Architectural Draftsmen, Department of Capital Programs. Thomas Washington, Brother of Preston Davis Maintenance Department. Dominique Miller, a 10th-grade student at Forestville Military Academy. Amber Stanley, 12th-grade student at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. Norman Rich, a former custodian in the Office of Supporting Services. Officer Adrian Morris, a Prince George's County Public School Department, police officer, and a 2007 graduate of Eleanor Roosevelt. Thank you for that moment of silence. We ask that you sign up for events and updates on board meetings and policies. At this time, I will yield to Dr. Height for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to members of the board. It's that time of year again, back to school. Prince George's County Public Schools started our 2012-13 year on this past Monday, welcoming back students to our 205 schools. So special thanks to all of my senior staff, instructional directors, our principals, our administrators, our teachers, and all of the support staff for once again preparing in remarkable fashion our over 200 schools to receive the 120,000 young people who returned this past Monday. I spent the morning in several schools across the district where I had a chance to see firsthand students and teachers, their excitement about the new year. I hope that parents will be excited to see the new programs underway in many schools, such as Gwen Park High School's IT program. I saw the impact of this program and this program's impact on students at Fairmont Heights, and I'm proud that we're building on its success. Next year, a third program will start at Duval High School. Our commitment to preparing students for college and careers can be seen throughout our high schools. The first class, as you saw in the video, of high school fire cadets were inducted earlier this week at Charles Herbert Flowers High School, and new career academies are opening at many other schools. As a parent, I remember how the new year, how the new school year meant expecting be unexpected. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of our families for your patience this week in getting acclimated to new school bus service, bell times, construction, and renovation issues, and other matters. We are working to address your concerns and answer your questions as quickly as possible. In addition, we have received concerns regarding bus stop and the actual locations from many of their parents. I want all parents to know that we've developed additional, we've deployed additional staff to review the safety of the new bus stop locations and address these concerns. We appreciate your patience as we continue to review these locations and make adjustments to reroute if necessary. Any change is made to the routing system could take approximately one week from the date of the investigation. This morning, I had the opportunity to attend an event where our board chair, along with board members Armwood and Waller, and Secretary of Education Ani Duncan discussed the challenge of addressing hunger in the classroom. Our schools offer a nutritious breakfast and lunch program that is open to any student in the district. I would like to encourage all parents to contact your school about the options that are available for your child and to make sure that they start the day with a healthy meal. A hungry child is also an unfocused student. On a somber note, I would like to join our board members in expressing my condolences to the family of Amber Stanley and the students and staff of Charles Herbert Flowers High School on her tragic death. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for your report and your remarks. Chair recognizes Shabnam Ahmed.
Hi, I'd just like to say it's an honor to be here and a privilege to serve on the board, and I'd just like to thank the students, my peers who have elected me. It is because of you all, because of them, that I'm here, and I promise to represent them well. And I'm excited for the new year ahead of me, and I'm sure it's going to go smoothly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. At this time, I want to ask Dr. Tamara Henry, organizer of the Scholastics Olympics, to come forward to recognize students who participated in the Second Annual Scholastics Olympics, excuse me, that was held in May 2012.
Yes, thank you.
So we have these awards. I guess the easiest way to do this is for us to come forward and pass it. Are they all here? Are you going to?
Most are here, yes.
Okay, so we'll call names and give them their...
Okay, that sounds good. I just wanted to say that Scholastic Olympics is very grateful to the board for recognizing our winners this year. This is the second year for our competition, and we just think that we have some brilliant minds in this county, and it's just so good that we can recognize students in this way. Dornell Lisby? Dornell left today for New York. He is attending, I believe it's New York University. This is his first year. Eliza Joy Anco? Mackayla Wilson? I hope I pronounced it correctly. That's it. Thank you. I really appreciate this.
Congratulations again, Dr. Henry, for all your work and for everyone that participate in the Olympics. We are delighted to recognize you this evening. I now yield to Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, thank you. I am going to be brief. I can be long-winded, but we have a long meeting tonight. I am so excited and honored to be able to mention a few who, one week ago, made such a tremendous difference in getting out of Laurel Elementary Physical Plant, into Green Belt Middle School Physical Plant. An extraordinary effort. We had one plan Monday, a change plan on Tuesday, a change plan on Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, and by Saturday and Sunday, we opened Monday. And I will tell you, what a joy. So many people to thank. And lastly, if anyone whose individual name is not mentioned, it is clearly not because I don't understand and don't recognize you, but there were so many, so I kind of tried to group them. Everyone, when you hear your name, if you would then move forward, let me get everybody to the front for one single picture. Let me read your certificate. Melinda Lee, Principal, Laurel Elementary, in appreciation of your unwavering commitment and leadership in organizing the entire staff of Laurel Elementary School and facilitating the move which made the first day of school a success. Andrew Zuckerman, in appreciation of your unwavering commitment and leadership with planning and facilitating the move for Laurel Elementary School which made the first day of school a success. Paula Harris, in appreciation of your unwavering commitment and leadership in the planning and facilitating the Laurel Elementary School move to make the first day of school a success. Mr. Sam Stefanelle, in appreciation of your leadership and supervision in facilitating the Laurel Elementary School move to make the first day of school a success. And Mr. Sam Stefanelle is facility supervisor and plant operations. And Paula Harris is the instructional director of Area 1, and Mr. Andrew Zuckerman is the assistant superintendent of Area 1. And I believe I said that Ms. Melinda Lee is the principal of Laurel Elementary. The next certificate is to Ace Afsme, Local 2250. So many, so many, the president of Local 2250 will accept on behalf of her members, in appreciation of the union's dedication and unwavering commitment in facilitating and assigning support staff for the Laurel Elementary School move that made the first day a success. Local 400, accepting on behalf of Local 400, I believe will be Mr. Selman, unless it is the president. Ah, Mr. Selman is here. In appreciation of the union members who supervised and facilitated the Laurel Elementary School move to make the first day of school a success. I will tell you, that furniture and stuff was heavy, and they moved it and moved it beautifully and never complained. Local 400 and our largest group, I don't have everybody's name, but the teachers of Laurel Elementary School, I am asking that the president of the PGCEA, Prince George's County Educators Association, accept with my gratitude on behalf of the teachers of Laurel Elementary for their dedication and unwavering commitment, of the school members of Laurel Elementary who made the first day of school a tremendous success. To each of you, this is a small thank you, but your work was, has become legendary. And I do thank you, thank you, thank you for the many, many hours that you gave to the children of Laurel... children of Laurel Elementary, and on behalf of children of our county, you are absolutely fabulous.
So, we know that there were, that there are many heroes in the opening of our schools for Monday, but there were a few areas that, that, you know, had the call of duty at the last minute in some respects that, that really required all hands on deck, and I think that's what we saw in Laurel Greenbelt. Chair recognizes Ms. Boston.
Yes, I as well had one of those schools that had to move Dalswelley Brooks into Berkshire. I would like to, I didn't want to take away from your recognition today, so I will be doing that recognition at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Okay, so we have at 4.0, do we have? Are they on agenda? Non-agenda, okay, thank you, I just want to make sure. All right, Chair yields to Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That brings us to items under 7.0, and these are items under Consent Agenda. These are items 7.1 to 7.12 that are being submitted for Board approval.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Chair yields to Ms. Johnson. You wanted to pull one for discussion, Ms. Johnson. Consent Agenda. Did you want, was a different one? Okay, sorry, that was my fault. Got it. Thank you. I got it. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, colleagues, I entertain a motion. It's been properly moved and second to accept Consent Agenda, items 7.1 to 7.12. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next items are items under 8.0, Budget Consent Agenda, submitting items 8.1 to 8.5, and item 8.8 to 8.10 for Board approval.
Madam Chair, I move that item 8.3 be removed just for very brief statement regarding the contents.
Go right ahead, Ms. Johnson.
You wish to have the.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
And then we can put it right back. Colleagues, and Madam Chair, I wish to make note of 8.3, the Apple Incorporated Computer Equipment Lease. In the, toward the end of the document, there is information that Dwight Eisenhower Middle School is also in that part of the document about coming online to be our next, I call it the iPad program. Mr. Watts can tell you its official name, where like the one at William Word and like the one at Charles Carroll. And I have also said to Mr. Watts and am recommending to this body that we use this as an opportunity to begin to stage over the next year, too, that all of our middle schools will have this type of programming in it. It is exciting for kids, and it is wonderful. So, if you've had, there's so much to read, if you didn't get to the very bottom, that is one item that is within this, if you accept this item. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm ready that we can put it back on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Colleagues.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to add one statement to Ms. Johnson's review of that. Ms. Johnson is absolutely correct, we did add Dwight Eisenhower, and inside of these monies, it's also to expand to the ninth grade of the high schools where those middle schoolers will be attending who were exposed to this program a year ago. So, it's to expand both across all middle schools and then up into high school to follow the students who were exposed to this type of technology last year.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for that clarification. Colleagues, may I have a motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, actually, you can't second that one. I know, that's, can I have a second? It's been properly moved and second to approve the Budget Consent Agenda. Ms. Thompson, call the roll.
Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Mrs. Beck. I'm sorry, I should say, Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Colleagues, we've properly moved and moving on. Dr. Height.
Madam Chair, that brings, because there's no governance unfinished business, no new business first reader, that brings us to 12.0, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have two registered speakers for public comment this evening. Those who have been registered, you may speak for three minutes in public comment for the topic for which you have registered. You may not relinquish your time to another speaker, registered or unregistered. Please come forward, Mr. Kenneth Haynes.
Do you hear me now? Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Height, the title of my talk for better is "The Real Work Goes On." The film title Waiting for Superman was a reference to Jeffrey Canada's childhood memory of learning that Superman does not exist, and his concern that there would be nobody to save him from peril. We've been waiting for Superman for far too long in Prince George's County. All of us must accept now that Superman does not exist, especially in terms of the search of the next superintendent. Since 1987, my first year as a teacher, the education community has endured nine changes since its superintendent. Each has attempted to deploy relatively meager resources in different ways. Now, all have moved on, most have departed without the benefits of a single contract extension, despite nearly constant improvements in student achievement in those twenty-some years. Turnover at every level is harming the school system. The lack of continuity in the workforce is impeding progress in classrooms and right here in Sasser as well. No superintendent is imbued with supernatural powers to surmount all the difficulties with new educational paradigms. We have been exceptionally blessed these last few years to have a superintendent who demonstrated the belief that teachers are part of the solution, and a Board of Education who has had the wisdom to give him free rein. His tenure has been transformational here. Dr. Height, we're going to miss your leadership. We only regret that the change of focus has not been given the opportunity to permeate throughout our schools. As the Board deliberates on a successor, it's our fervent hope that the qualities of collaboration and transparency are high on the list of desirable attributes. It's imperative that you find another effective manager who understands that teachers hold the school system together through thick and thin. That would be visionary. PGCEA's agenda is to rid our schools of the, PGCEA's agenda is to rid our schools of the culture of compliance that has been allowed to exist too long in our schools, and to elevate teaching to the ranks of a true self-monitoring profession. PGCEA has remained steadfast in its efforts to collaborate around the issue of improving professional practice and raising student achievement. I'm sharing with you a write-up requested by the Department of Education just a couple weeks ago. Arnie Duncan's staff wanted to share our story at a workshop on labor management collaboration in education. PGCEA wants to continue that work together for the benefit of the children we teach, but we believe that only occurs when teachers are recognized as full partners in the delivery of effective instruction. Last Monday, 9,000 educators entered the classroom to meet their 120,000 students. Those two teachers will grade papers by midnight oil and contribute school supplies from their own pocket. They will inspire student achievement and continue the upward trend on status mandated assessments if and only if we give them solid reasons to remain here. Teachers are the superheroes for whom we await. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'd first like to welcome our new student member of the Board, Ms. Shabnam Ahmed, to her first regular meeting of the Board, and wish you a successful term. I'd like also to welcome back the other members of the Board from what was supposed to be a break, but apparently has been very busy, and thank you for the time you've put in over the summer, and I'm looking forward to a very, very exciting and busy year for the Board and for the community of Prince George's County. In that regard, as you might expect, I hope that this will be a year that will increase even more the transparency and openness and participatory nature of the governance of our school system. In that regard, I'd like to commend the Board for posting the employment contract that was just passed a few moments ago with our interim superintendent-to-be. Actually, it starts today, so our interim superintendent. Sorry, was, oh, okay, that's me, and I apologize. The, I hope you will do the same with the superintendent's contract for the permanent superintendent. On the other hand, you met several times this summer, some of which was in private with potential candidates, and in reviewing the candidates, that's entirely appropriate, but you also met in private to discuss how you would conduct the search, your policies, criteria, whatever. Those should have been in public, and there is no exemption for discussing matters of that sort behind closed doors. I also note with dismay that a few moments ago, when the student member attempted to second a motion with regard to budget items, she was refused. She may not vote on budget items, but there is nothing in the law to prevent her from making motions, seconding motions, and discussing motions and other things related to budgetary matters. The only thing is she cannot vote. If she proposes something either as a primary mover or a seconder, it's up to the other members of the Board whether you want to vote in favor or against that motion, but there is nothing in the law that prevents her from doing that, and I hope in the future you'll accept her motions and her seconds and her discussion on items on which she cannot vote. In any case, I'm looking forward to a great year from all of you. I applaud your dedication to the community and hope that we can work together for a better education for the children of this county. Thank you very much.
Colleagues, that concludes our speaker list for non-agenda items. Follow-up items for the board meeting for June 28th is posted on Board Docs. Are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding follow-up items? Seeing none, Ms. Higgins, may I please have a motion to confirm actions taken in executive session?
Madam Chair, I move to conform actions taken in executive session.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we confirm actions taken in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Move, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. I know everybody's in a state of shock, it's okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting, and we are so adjourned.